Okay. All right. What? Okay, yep, okay. Let's go ahead and move on to item number four, and this is Citizens to be Heard. This is the opportunity for citizens, visitors, and guests to address the City Council on any issue or any item on the agenda in compliance with LGC Section 551.007. City Council may not discuss any presented issue nor may take any action on any issue at this time. Citizens to be Heard are limited to three minutes each. Attorney General Opinion JC 0169. Do we have anybody in the Citizens to be Heard? We do have some two public hearings that's completely separate for things on the agenda. This is for anything else that somebody would like to come up. Okay? Ronnie, come on up.
My name is Ronnie Rodriguez. I am Assistant of Lytle, and I am also Council Paper Clerk for the city. The reason I came by, I wasn't able to get on the agenda, but I just wanted to give a handout to City Council just to make them aware of some of the changes in my job that have come up since Lynette left May 16th. So, I just want, I know it's something that would have to be discussed on the agenda, but I was able to get it, but I just wanted to make it aware before waiting another two weeks. So, is it okay if I just hand it out? And it just has some, kind of what I wanted to talk about, and then some, kind of a charter or something.
You can talk about it. The only thing is supposed to be a discussion.
Yes, you can discuss it. Yes, sir.
And number two, the only thing in your comments is if you could please make sure that we address, because it has to go through the City Administrator.
Yes.
And then from the City Administrator, it comes over here, because that's the first thing that we're going to be asking whenever it does.
Okay, okay. Well, I wasn't able to talk to Zach yet, but I know there was anything.
Do you want to go ahead and talk to Zach first? I mean, and then that way, when it's presented, it's actually gone through the appropriate channels? Okay?
Yeah.
It might, it might be better. I mean, it might be better, talk to Zach first. Okay? Let's use a protocol of, especially as an employee of the city, just route it through Zach, and let Zach go ahead, and then we put it on the agenda for the next time. Okay? Based on the procedures.
Okay. I agree. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We definitely want to go ahead and address it, Ronnie, okay? All right. Anything, anybody else? Going once, going twice. Okay, we were supposed to have an individual here real quick. I just wanted to let the council know, because some significant things that he did for us. Unfortunately, he's stuck in traffic, so he couldn't be here. But for years and years and years, right in front of us here, we had this. That represented a symbol. And we had a veteran of ours that is here that does woodwork, A.J. Franks, that actually went ahead and did something for us. So, very, very nice. We're going to go ahead and replace that one with this one, and it's going to go right in there. We also have another one that was made, so we can go ahead and take care of the community center too. We can display something in the community center. And if you have not looked around, we need to take care of the walls still shortly. But if you notice, because we do have all three counties, he also made us Bear County, Atascosa County, and then we have Medina County, which are all the three counties that are inside the city limits. He did a great, great job. I asked him if he could just stop by real quickly, just to say thanks for doing this for the city. We'll try to catch him at a later time to be able to do that. But just one of the other ways that we're just trying to enhance, you know, our areas and highlight ourselves, and boy, he did a great job without a doubt. I mean, this is awesome.
Sure is.
This is awesome, awesome work, and we appreciate him helping us out. This other one that we have, the, this, the old one, we're not going to get rid of it. We actually need to put something over at the senior center, so we're going to go ahead and move that over there. It already has some of those colors over there, so that, we're going to go ahead and keep it and utilize it in another location too. So, just to let, let everybody know. All right. Let's go ahead and move on to item number five, is Consent Agenda. A, Consider Approval or Payment of the Bills.
Mayor, I'd like to start by making a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Okay. Definitely.
I'll second that.
Okay. You have any discussion?
Do you have a question on the Civic Plus? Could you give me just a brief description on the, the annual fee for the host and support?
Yeah, so that's for our actual website and everything that goes along with the, like any of the modules or programs included within the website. You know, kind of like our notifications that we send out and stuff like that. Yeah. Yeah, so that's all the hosting for, for that website and everything.
That's the background to make sure that it's, it's working. And where does this extend out to? Just anybody that, that goes into the city website and registers?
Yeah, yeah. On the Learn side, yes. I mean, I do have to go in there and do that, but this, but this would cover just actual hosting of the website in its totality.
Okay. The other item was also for that, the permitting fee. That permitting fee goes to?
That is the actual permitting program that we, I guess, the city took on a couple years ago now, and to do our actual permit through the system, so that way we're not writing them on paper anymore, and we actually have it electronically. So, it's that particular program, the annual fee associated with that.
What do you mean, permit?
Any building permits, electrical?
Oh, oh, okay. That's right.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and it's through, it's the same company as the website, but, yeah.
That's right. Thank you.
And then I do want to just highlight, I did leave on the bias, it, it looks different than what was included in the Packet 1, because it was sorted alphabetically, whereas there were some in the previous one that were not. And then we did add, since the Packet was put out, the Underground Water Resources, which is the payment for the plan of well three. So, that, that's the only addition that we have on there, and I just didn't want to miss another two weeks before we got it in front of you on that one, so.
Counsel, do you have any preference of how it's printed? This for?
And the 123 ready to discuss, did we bring it up?
That was already, it's already been budgeted. We closed out one of the CDs to, to handle that cost. It was just a matter of actually paying them, so. And they went ahead and closed everything out. That project is done. It's closed out. The plugging report has been sent to Edwards and to TCEQ, so this is just their, their payment for that work.
No, I think just long as the associated items are grouped, that should, that should be fine.
So, make sure that we get an opportunity to give them some feedback. Okay? Anything else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All ayes. Appreciate it. Thank you, Counsel. Okay, let's go ahead and move on into our public hearing portion of it, and we're going to handle each item independently. And let's go ahead and show 6:39 for the first one on here. NAA is Conduct a Public Hearing Concerning Application for Variance for the Property Located in 19942 John Wayne Road from Section 46-190, Area Regulations of Division 2, R1 Single Family Dwelling District of Article 5, Districts and District Regulations of Chapter 46, Zoning to Allow for A Structure to Be Placed at 3 1/2 Feet Less Than the Minimum Rear Setback of 15 Feet As Required Allowed in the Variances obtained by Saddle Ridge Estates Subdivision. So, this is a portion that is open to anybody that would like to make any comments before we actually take action in an action item. So, I didn't see anybody signed up for that. I know the people that are here for those areas will be, will, yes, you'll, in the action item, you'll have an opportunity. This is for other people that would like to go ahead and, and, and say something.
And just, just for the record, the city doesn't have a Board of Adjustment, and so this is, City Council performs those functions. So, y'all are City Council members and commissioners on the Board of, or members of the Board of Adjustment. So, for this, these two items and the two action items, City Councils actually, y'all are taking off your City Council hats, and you're sitting as Board of Adjustment members to grant a variance.
Thank you, Austin. Appreciate that. Some of the, the multiple things that we get to do for the size of.
Some cities have a whole separate body, although you don't have to, though, and if you don't, then by default, City Council fills that, fills that role.
Yes, sir. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and say it. If there's anybody who would like to say any comments, going once, going twice. Okay? We'll go ahead and show it is 6:41 PM. We're closing this with no comments. If you can put that down, Paula. Okay? All right. Let's go ahead and move on to the other public hearing item, and we'll go ahead and show 6:41 as the opening items. And this is to Conduct a Public Hearing Concerning Application for Variance for the Property Located at 18808 Live Oak Street from Section 46-190, Area Regulations of Division 2, R1 Single Family Dwelling District of Article 5, Districts and District Regulations of Chapter 46, Zoning to Allow A Structure to Be Placed in the Side Property Line Less Than the Minimum Side Setback of 5 Feet and Front Setback of 13 Feet Less Than the Minimum 30 Feet. So, I didn't see anybody signed up for that one as a public notice, but I'll go ahead and ask. Anybody here for any comments on that item? Going once, going twice. Okay. Let's go ahead and show it is 6:42, Paula, and no comments, and we are closing that public hearing. Okay? All right. Let's go ahead and move on to item number seven. We're going to go ahead and do the open session. This is to Take Action on Items Discussed, and we'll go into a consideration and possible action concerning the application for a variance for the property located at 19942 John Wayne Road from Section 469190, Area Regulations of Division 2, R1 Single Family Dwelling District of Article 5, Districts and District Regulations of Chapter 46, Zoning to Allow A Structure to Be Placed at 3 1/2 Feet Less Than the Minimum Rear Setbacks of 15 Feet As Required and Allowed by Variance obtained by Saddle Ridge Estates. Zach, if you want to go ahead and get it started, and then we'll go ahead and open it up.
So, Mayor and Counsel, on this particular application for 19942 John Wayne Road, the property owners there are looking to place a above-ground pool on their property, and the exhibits that they provided as a part of that permit process were provided in the public hearing for y'all. The variance that they're looking to obtain is, they are looking to place the, or the pool structure at about 3 1/2 Feet from the rear property line. Saddle Ridge, if y'all recall, just like some of the other newer subdivisions, did get a variance back when those lots were ultimately platted, and so they were given a 15-foot setback for structures from the rear property lines, as opposed to our normal 30 feet that we require anywhere else in town. And so, they're obviously wanting to extend within that, and that's why ultimately the variance is, is being presented for y'all this evening. The Plan and Zoning Commission did, as y'all have requested, for variances to go through that process with them. They did recommend approval at their Plan and Zoning Commission at the last P&amp;Z, which was last Monday, so.
Okay. And we have Linda that is here, Ms. Atwood. If you can come up and just identify yourself and, and go ahead and provide any comments that you would like to share with the, with the Counsel.
Hi, I'm Linda Atwood. I'm a resident of Lytle, and I thank you, Counsel, for hearing my request. And we're, as he said, wanting to put in a temporary structure of an above-the-ground pool. And right now, the present 15-foot setback, the pool would basically be in our living room for the size that we're wanting, and to get any smaller, we're looking more at like kiddie pool. I want to be able to do exercising on my shoulder and stuff, and I need a deeper pool. So, I just respectfully request for you to give positive approval. That's it.
I appreciate it. Okay, Counsel, any, any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Linda, go ahead.
From the drawing you provided, it shows the, the legs, I guess, of the framework of the pool being 3 1/2 Feet. How far will the actual walls of the pool be?
Closer to 5.
Closer to 5.
Or about 5.
So, the location of this property is currently at the back end?
That's correct.
Right? And the, if you look at the back of the house, that's Farmland and Other Resident, correct?
Yes. Nothing behind it.
There's nothing behind, well, it just.
It's residential area.
Yeah. It hasn't been developed.
And then if you're looking from the front of the house, if you look to the left, there's could be future homes. Is there currently a home being built there?
No.
But there could be future homes built there. So, my question to you is that I can understand your request to not be able to meet the three, the 15 feet on the back of the property, but you're also only using 5 feet on the, if you're looking from the house on the left side, you could actually use all 15 feet and move it over. It may not align to where you currently want it, but at least that won't be out of variance.
Would you be willing to do that?
So, the, the side variance, we are within the 5 feet for that.
So, is that the requirement for side to side?
Correct. Side setbacks for that area is 5 feet. So, they're, they're right at that, so they're, that's why there's no variance being taken for that.
So, then we're looking at only the back?
It's just the back.
Based on what they propose, only the back.
So, what type of foundation are you going to put on this?
It would be what the manufacturer recommends, and so it would be, it would be sand, packed, packed sand. No.
And you're going to have your, your support both, there's a requirement for a fence to be surrounding the pool. Is that pool supposed to have its own individual fence, or is that going to be the property fence?
Yeah, the property fence in, in Texas can, as long as it has a gate and it's locked, that kind of stuff.
And it's all around.
Corrupt.
Which it is.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, did I understand you say there, there is no one behind you, and there will not be anyone behind you?
No.
No building, lots back there?
Eventually. What is that?
This Lytle Farms development.
How far away though?
That abuts us, that abuts Saddle Ridge.
Yeah, it would, it would just be a different subdivision back there.
But it will come right up to your back fence. Lot of farms, no?
Yes.
Yeah, because if you recall, the, the, the street that divides Sections 2 and 5 of Saddle Ridge will actually be how a secondary entrance into Lytle Farms as well, so, so those homes will come right up to that.
I don't know if we'll still be living there when that happens, but getting older.
So, the thing you have going for you is that it's a temporary, I mean, it could be moved, taken down. That's going for you, however, it is still requiring a variance.
Is that what you said, is zone approved? Or they recommended approval? They did recommend approval, but I know in the past, when, when we looked at, you know, I, I think the, the last pool out there that we had was, we kept it at the 15, and there was a flat work that was allowed closer, but, you know, we, we kind of kept it at that 15, so.
Is there any way that it could be maybe a different size of pool to be able, I know you under, I understand what you're saying about being able to. So, when I, when I look at this, is, and the distance and everything, and even though we don't have something, you've still got to consider it's a pool, it's above ground, the amount of water that you're going to have in there too, on there. Is there any way that it could actually have a little bit more of a distance from, from the fence?
5 Feet.
So, you have 5 feet from the back of the house to the very first part of the pool, and then you're doing 3 1/2 to the back. You can't get, instead of a 15-foot wide, yeah, 15-foot wide, you couldn't get a 10-foot?
The size, yeah, they don't come in the depth that I'm wanting. They're not coming in the depth that I want of the pool. Basically, the smaller you get, the more, it's just like a Walmart kiddie pool.
10-foot wouldn't be able to give you the depth?
That would be probably touching our house.
Yeah, the thing, the thing about it is, is, so, it would, it would be, it would be, to me, that is to me, Counsel, everybody, but I'm, I'm visual, I want to make sure that we can help you out. But you're looking at above-ground pool, you have a rail, or if you put anything on a dock, the fence is already at 6 Feet. So, the top of the pool is already going to be foot from the top, right?
54 inches.
Right? So, you're already going to be pretty close to that. So, when you're standing, and you have anything built out around you, you're going to be standing, you're going to be able to see into your neighbors, neighbors' houses, right?
Yeah, it would just be the ladder that you go up through the street back in.
Yeah.
There's no depth.
But you're going to be above. One of the things, the reason that we did this with this background, because I know the Counsel, the reason that we did the 6,000, and we gave the, the variances, is to give privacy to the people that are around you to be able to do that, and privacy also for the homeowner that is there. So, the last thing that we dealt with, the swimming pool, that's one of the things that we try to do, is try to give some sort of room within that area to be able to give the privacy that goes along with that. That's the reason why I think we're asking, is there any way that you can have flexibility of being able to get more in the back, be able to get it in there? Especially since you're looking at it as more of an exercise, right? A physical therapy-type pool, something that would give you, and it would actually give you more of the distance, especially with that variance that we have.
I respect what you're saying there about the ladder and being up on the ladder and seeing into your neighbor's backyard. Basically, having that ladder at my patio, I would be able to see into my neighbor's backyard because of the depth of the lot. Yeah, they just, they don't make them. I mean, I'm not looking to put like a custom in the ground pool.
Yeah, the developer, and I'm sorry that it didn't happen, but that was one of the concerns. We brought up swimming pools, and we brought up sheds to the developer, and that was supposed to be communicated to the homeowners about the restrictions that go along with that, so they knew when they were purchasing them that, hey, it's limited based on the square footage and what the easements are, because we knew that, that we had an idea that we were going to be dealing with this. So, it was very clearly communicated to the developer. We want to take care of you, but we also, as a community, we got to take care of everybody that is around you to try to do that. So, you know, the Counsel.
So, Mayor, to go back with August of 2024, and, and what I stood for back then, I'm going to do it again, I'm going to pick a motion to deny the request for variance based on the current plans.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor?
May I speak?
I have a motion, you will have a chance, sir.
I second that motion.
Okay, got a second. Okay, now we're up to discussion. So, if you would like to speak, sir, come on up, introduce yourself to the Counsel.
I'm Richard Atwood. I'm the spouse.
Yes, sir.
The questions I have for the Counsel is, I know that in past, a couple months ago, I think it was, you guys approved a 5-foot setback for a shed in the same neighborhood. Is the shed in the pool different subjects, or the 5-foot setback the subject? Was the concern, I guess, the 5-foot of the, of the pool itself versus the shed?
Now, the, I mean, from what I saw, it was, the fact that it was a structure, there's, and, and we said that on one side, you're not going to have lighting, so you couldn't interfere with the neighbor.
Right.
You, there's obviously going to be no window there, so we're looking at more like privacy, and, and as the mayor was speaking, there originally was 30 Feet, and now it's 15, so anything you put back in your backyard, unfortunately.
Well, I understand, and I understand. I'm just asking for clarity as far as, I've seen, I've seen 5-foot setbacks approved for other structures.
Right.
And I've also seen, what do you call it? Unapproved structures being put in yards, pools being put in yards, what have you, so we're trying to go.
Been one pool?
That you've received here.
Right, right, what?
There's one pool, so if you know somebody else, you might want to, okay? So, it's one pool, and we had that, and then the sheds that we have approved, the sheds, we're very specific of how they need to be facing to be able to provide the, the noise and the privacy, the lighting that goes along with that, and we treat each one individually, just because one is just for storage, just to be able to keep that, and the pool is, is different, so.
Let me ask you this, in the pool, I believe in her drawing, does she have the pool placed on the south side or the north, let me see? I'm sorry. We moved from Oregon, so I'm getting my compass. The north side of the yard, is that the side of the yard she shows it in?
From the front of the house.
Okay, so, would it make any difference if the pool went to the right side of the yard?
Well, the, the.
That's a street, that's a street.
Right now, it's just the distance from the back fence to the, the first set of, you know, the structure, right?
The back, yeah, so the Counsel, when we came up with the 6,000 square foot, and we came with the distances, what we wanted is, we wanted the houses to be, that were next to each other, but the homes would actually have more distance between the backyards for a little bit more of the privacy. You know, we could have done the lots like this, and you would literally have like 5 Feet from, you know, from the fence to your house and giving you more room this way. So, what we did is, we did it this way with distance in the backyard here and distance for the privacy that goes along with that. So, all these setbacks were set up.
Motion, right, to deny?
Yes.
Are we in this motion?
Yes.
We're in discussion.
Okay.
That's correct.
I would like to table this until, see if they can move it to the right side of the roadway, where it would give the neighbors that are going to build on the left side privacy, along with maybe a different size of a pool, and let them see what they can come back with before we deny totally.
Yeah. So, right now, we got a motion on, on the denial, so we have to vote on that first, and if then that doesn't pass, then we can, you can make a motion for us to table, okay? So, we're just going to take each one.
About the size of the pool, you're going to have a real hard time getting towards 15-foot that, that is now in our ordinance.
Right, the yard, right now, from the, from the house to the fence is 25 Feet, so.
Sure. I know they make exercise pools that actually have like the flowing water in them, you can swim and actually not move.
Like a swimming pool.
Yeah. And that would come a whole lot closer to fit in there, I mean.
It's financially not the same.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
Thirty, forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay. 10 by 25, you know, if you keep it close to the house, it would give you more room in the back.
Just that extra 5 Feet for the, for the width of it, not the length, but the width, because we're going from 15 to, to 10, and I know you may comment on that. I, I feel for the residents of that subdivision and other subdivisions coming around Texas. It's, it's unfortunate that you get the yard you get, but it's got to be something you got to live in, and unfortunately, the city has to be fair across all residents, you know?
We're trying to go by the book.
Yes, sir, and I, and it's greatly appreciated, because you could have put this up without, without warning. I, yeah, but, you know, you, you, you come across the consequence if you do that.
Yeah.
No, it's, I, I feel, I, it's just unfortunate that's the way, but when you lost that 15 Feet from the original 30, that really made a difference. Not you personally, but, you know, the subdivision and others.
You understand the concept of creeping variances too. Okay? If we approve this, the next family that comes in, they want to make the back fence, the back wall a pool, and, but we gave you this, so we have to give them that, and.
So, so let's go ahead and do this, just so we can see whether or not we have another option on there. Do you have on any comments or anything? Okay. So, let's go ahead and do this. We have a motion for us to go ahead and deny it, and a second one to go ahead and deny. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
To deny? Two? Okay. And how many, and all those nays? In other words, okay, so I got two, so we, so I have the opportunity to go ahead and vote, is that correct? Since we actually have a tie? So, what I would like to do, just so we can stay consistent, and this doesn't mean that you cannot come back, you can always come back, okay? But based on what is presented right now, I am going to go ahead and go with the Counsel, and I'll go ahead and put my vote to deny the motion, or to deny the actual provision of, of the variance that goes along with that, okay? So, I'm going to go ahead and do that, and, and what we're going to do is, we're going and what we're going to do is, we're going to go ahead and give you an opportunity, go back, relook at it, see if we can find another structure. I think Councilman Martinez also brought up, along with a few others, let's look at other options and bring it back so we can go ahead and take care of that. Austin, since this has come through here or has already come through this, does it still need to go through planning and zoning again, or can it come directly to council?
That's what we're gonna talk about. I don't know, I'm not aware of a provision that requires it to go to P and Z to begin with. It's, it's not typical that it would...
Okay.
Board of Adjustment and P and Zers.
So let's do this. If it's okay, Austin, work directly with Zach. Let's come up with a plan, work directly with Zach, so that way we don't lose, or we don't add time for the next look, okay? And we can go ahead and put it on the next agenda. So whenever you guys are ready.
So, Paul, if you could make sure you note it on the motion that it was as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you, council. I know tough decisions, but I appreciate your inputs on that. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to B in this consideration and possible action concerning the application. And by the way, you're more than welcome to stay, or if you want to leave, it's up to you all, okay? B, consideration and possible action concerning the application for a variance for the property located at 18808 Live Oak Street from Section 46190, Area Regulations of Division 2, R1, Single Family Dwelling District of Article 5, Districts and District Regulations of Chapter 46, Zoning, to allow for a structure to be placed at the side property line less than the minimum side setback of five feet and the front setback of 13 feet, less than the minimum 30 feet. Zach?
Right. So mayor and council, on this particular variance being requested, we have two separate variances, the front yard variance. If you notice in the drawings that were provided, the owner of this particular address on Live Oak Street is looking to place a carport in front of their home. And based on the distance from the existing porch structure on the front of the home to where they're wanting the carport basically to stop towards the street, leaves about 13 feet left of their property. So that's where that front variance, 13 feet, is what they're requesting. On the side, they're looking to place it basically at the, at the property line, the side property line. And so similar to, I think, what, what is kind of already around them. And so that's why they're, they're looking at doing it that particular way. So the applicant is here as well. Plan and zoning commission also recommended approval on both of these particular variances as well. So...
Come on up, sir. Name's Barbara Hears and I live on 18808 Live Oak Street. I have the approval from my neighbor and it's gonna be about two and a half to three feet from his fence. So what does hang over is gonna be close to it, but it will have gutters. So no water, nothing will go into his property.
Just gonna ask you a personal question.
Yes, sir.
Your neighbor, are they related?
No.
It's just interesting, when you look at the property, those homes are built right next to each other and there's so much room on that property. It's, I just, observation that I saw there. When I look at the pictures you submitted, I see that the neighbor, it looks, appears to be adequate distance from his carport to the fence. So I have a couple of questions. On the fence, where it comes to the front of the property, your privacy fence, where it stops, the carport is gonna exceed that?
No.
It'll be in line with that?
No.
Behind it?
Behind it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So the, the front of the fence, the current property fence is, is inside the, the boundary, right?
Yeah, but normally fences, you don't, they don't meet, you know, have to meet the setback requirements in a way.
Okay.
Pete, do you have a second? Can you come up while we're finishing? Go ahead. Yeah, I'll finish.
Fences are typically right along the property line and they're shared.
Yeah.
Typical fences and flat work.
Oh, well, you can see it on that.
So the primary big question was to make sure that this carport does not exceed the front of that fence.
No, no, actually mine will be shorter than my neighbor's.
So the water line?
The utilities?
The water and gas run through there.
Is it right in here or is it over here?
No, it's right at the edge of the road.
Right on the edge?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's over here, way...
Yeah, way over there.
Okay.
The edge of the road.
Okay. Just asking whether or not where the utilities are at and everything in there because of course with the posts and everything that goes along with that.
This is the road.
That's a clean out from his house coming into the...
Sure. But the, the supports for the shed or the overhang are going to be in your property or in the right of way?
In my property.
And that'll be where that...
The right on the property line?
driveway will be the 13.
And it'll be mounted on the existing driveway?
Or right next to it?
Yeah.
Because when you look at it, you have a driveway, a concrete driveway, right? So those pillars that are gonna be mounted to the concrete or in the dirt?
In the dirt. They're gonna be right next to it.
So you have, yeah, because you have the, the walkway that comes from the front of the door. So you have that, that is a little bit different from over here.
Right, but along the fence line, he's gonna put those into the dirt and not onto the concrete. That could be bolted to the concrete.
I wanted to bury on the concrete.
It's, it's not that deep of concrete? You only got four or five inches of concrete on the, on the driveway?
Okay.
So I, I see the picture and I see your drawing and you have room there, you know, you've got plenty of room. It's unfortunate that your driveway doesn't extend throughout the, that your walkway into the house is not extended to the driveway, because you could use that, you know, as, as an addition to the carport, right? You see what I'm talking about? The, the, the walkway to your house, it stops kind of midway of your driveway, right? So what I'm saying is, it's unfortunate that all of that's not concrete, because you could shift everything over to the required variance.
On the side, just the side.
Yeah. There, I mean, that could move over, that's a good, what, five feet at least? So right now, we're sitting at three and a half?
Are you connected on the, so the roof line is gonna connect to the roof line of the house or two separate?
They're separate.
So it's completely separate on that? Okay.
I'm not saying whether I approve or disapprove, but one of the things I do want to see and mention is that the roof is vertical. My recommendation, and I don't know if we can put, Austin, as a requirement, that they be horizontal and not vertical?
For...
For the, for the roofing. So if you look at the picture from, I guess, that's just a picture of a, that's an example of another carport, right, that you submitted? No, the, the other picture that you have of the, of a standing, yeah, that one. Yeah. So you see that the roof line is vertical. So what I would like to see, and I was, I'm asking Austin, we could...
Oh, I see what's...
If we approve it...
It's perpendicular to the...
Right. And the purpose is, is so rainfall will not be sheeted off onto the neighbor. Instead, because of horizontal, it would be basically folded over. Do you give...
I mentioned, I will put gutters, so water will go into the gutters.
Oh, you're gonna put gutters?
Yes, they're not gonna go to the neighbor's house. And that's why I have his signature there, saying it's okay.
Do you have a signature on this?
Yes.
From your neighbor?
Phone number, no, they don't like calling.
What's on the other side of the fence for the neighbor? Is it a carport and driveway for the neighbor?
Yeah, it looks like he's got a little bit of a distance there, I saw that. I don't know what the distance is. It's, it's at least two feet is what it looks like.
His carport is actually built into his house, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it just made an extension on it with the same distance add on that.
Which I don't know for sure without seeing the survey, but, you know, it probably was built at about five, five, anywhere from five to 10 feet is normally what we see in that area. So which would have been, the five foot would have been allowed. Extended in front wouldn't have been, but, yeah.
The, so the driveway, you don't know how thick it is, the concrete?
About four inches.
About four inches? I mean, just there again, you're talking about three and a half feet. Even pushing it out five more feet to seven and a half. And if you had to, you could, you could go out there with the concrete saw and, and, you know, make an opening there and put your own footing in there and to reinforce the, you know, your columns.
So you're saying to make it?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying. I, I can't, I can't approve the three and a half feet.
The only, the only requirement per the ordinance would be five, five feet from that side. So if it met five...
The side.
The side.
So it's a foot and a half, basically.
Which would still put you in the same picture, because now you're gonna get back onto the concrete.
So it's, it's a foot and a half on there?
The issue that if, if you were to do that, the only issue would be the front setback.
Yeah.
How about this? I'm looking at the picture. Is there, is there any way, I mean, you have the concrete, you have the sidewalk. How about if you just extend the sidewalk all the way to that first post? And then that gives you the extra concrete that you need. And if you shift to, just like Alderman Rodriguez is talking about, see what I'm saying? And you can shift over.
In this case, it's only a couple of inches, I mean, a couple of feet.
No, no, no.
The sidewalk, actually, your sidewalk is what?
Yeah, we're not talking about this one here. He only needs to go two more feet, because he's dragged out three and a half.
But that gives him the room, because if you put it on here...
Yeah, exactly.
He's using it to the half.
Yeah, exactly. Just shift everything over.
I'll give you that. You know what I mean? Where you can put your post, just cut into the concrete.
You're saying basically right now, this one, right, just moving this one over?
Moving it over where it will meet the five feet from, from...
Right.
From here, some of the concrete here, put your post in there, this is into the concrete, and now you're at the five feet.
Yeah, you could, I mean, you could either use a saw or you could core it, you know, just get it.
And if you need to load the extra distance, just go towards the sidewalk on there. See what I'm saying?
So you would still have the same...
Because you want, your concern is with the two vehicles, right?
Yes.
So we're trying to make sure that you can take care of that. But by doing, that's a good idea too. By doing it in the concrete and you go down, you can get the post and you're within the five feet that is a requirement. And then you can actually shift down this way.
There's any way you can either a little bit wider instead of the four feet?
Go four feet instead of the five?
Yes.
It's, it's, it's gonna need to stay within the variance, unfortunately. I mean, we can make the motion now to grant you the permanent, I mean, or, I don't know how you would do it, as long as it's five feet.
To approve it with, with the five feet setback, which is a requirement.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can, I mean, there, you can grant one without the other, whether they are, you know?
Separate, separate variance.
Yeah, and the front one, there's, I don't think there's an issue with the front.
No, it's okay with that one. And that's why I called Pete and asked him. So I think...
His neighbor's carport shoots out.
Yeah, also, right, yeah.
So, I mean, I don't see...
I think he even said that it's gonna be, like, his will actually be further back from his there.
Yes.
But we can do, this is the thing, so we don't have to solve it. We can actually, if you like, council, you can go ahead and make the motion to approve, approve the variances, or, I'm sorry, approve with the five foot, especially with the variance on the side. And then we can leave it to the homeowner to actually work with Zach, okay? Based on how we actually get it adjusted. It could be cutting into the concrete or there might be something else that, hey, tomorrow morning, you walk out with a cup of coffee and say, hey, I can make it work, you know, and you can just...
As long as you get that five.
That way, that way it's taken care of and you're gonna meet the minimum of the five feet that you need.
The drain, the drain, that pipe runs like this and then it turns like that. So if I put concrete here, I'll cover it. So if it breaks later on for me to fix it, I have to be breaking out the concrete.
Well, we're talking about a little bit further, further down. You can actually just, it's more for your cars, right? So your car doesn't extend. So if you bring, if you extend this a little bit more, just to give yourself a little bit more clearance here?
Just right there, that drain out, that clean out runs up and then it turns that way.
Does it go right in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Was that a clean out? So that, that's the reason why I don't want to cover that with concrete. Oh, I see. That's something... Yes. So if I cover it, then I'll be having to chip that concrete out.
I'm just trying to give you the room that you need on the side with the vehicles to try to do that. So it's no problem this way, okay? Coming this way. It's just with your neighbors. So...
Where's the, where's the concrete on the right side right there? Where's the concrete relative to the side property line? Like this distance right here?
So from the fence is right at the line, right? Yes, from the fence is about two and a half to three feet.
Okay.
For where the concrete is.
So and you're asking to put this post in right off the existing concrete?
Yes, if I, if I could cut some, I can cut a little bit. I don't want to cut so far into it.
Is it possible to, I mean, that's, y'all are worried about the five feet on the neighbor's side, right?
Right.
Is it possible just to locate these posts, you know, right inside the concrete? That would be at like four feet.
Yeah.
And then you'd have to, you'd lose a little target space, but...
I can go and measure, make sure, and I'll get with Zach about that, see how that look, if it'll work.
We need to, we need to stick with the five feet. My, my motion's gonna be for the five feet. Somebody else could change the motion if they want.
Okay. Why don't we do it officially? Why don't you go ahead and make the motion?
Because it's already, your, your driveway is already within the five-foot setback.
Yeah, which is allowed.
Yeah. Okay.
It's just the post would be taken.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a structure.
Which is part of the structure at that point.
And why it has to meet the five.
Yeah.
Or it's supposed to be the five according to the ordinance.
So, Eric, I'd like to make a motion to approve the front section of the carport as presented.
Okay.
And to approve the side setback to be no less than five feet.
That's already the rule, though, right?
Yeah, so y'all are granting just one variance.
Okay.
Granting the variance with regard to the front setback.
Okay, then I, I changed my motion just to approve the front setback.
Okay.
And it would be, if you, if you just have that motion, then it would be no action, you know, it would be taking no action with regard to the second variance, which is fine, that means you can...
So I need to add that in there?
No, you don't want to be, if you're silent on it, it'll, it'll just be...
Okay.
It won't be approved, but it also won't be...
Right, okay. Okay, so you, go ahead and repeat it again, just to make sure.
So the motion is to approve the front?
The front setback.
The front setback of the carport as presented.
Okay, got a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
No, sir.
Okay, got a second, Anna? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, aye's?
Yeah.
Okay, all ayes, okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and take care of that. We want you to work with Zach, okay? I think there's a little bit of flexibility and I think that's what Austin was mentioning. I think that's what Matt was mentioning and even Mr. Rodriguez was trying to mention. There might be some flexibility in there based on what you currently have to make it work for you, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and take a look at C now, consideration and possible action concerning a request from Joe Thompson on behalf of Geno...
Genovia.
Genovia? Viva? Thompson regarding a utility bill adjustment for the property located at 4156 I-35. Okay, and I think we got Mr. Thompson here too. Awesome, go ahead, Zach.
Just start off and then, Mr. Thompson, welcome to, to offer anything that I missed or, or anything else. But we did get a request from Mr. Thompson. He submitted to ask for a bill adjustment. They had a fairly large leak that extended over two billing periods. Because of the rain that had been, we'd received in the area, he was kind of unaware. You can see his narrative that was presented to myself and for y'all's consideration. The total between those two billing cycles totaled 20, a little over 2,500 in, in, between those two. If you recall, we did adopt the ability to have council consider these up to 50%. And so generally, he'd been charged around $30 a month, typical bill. I did go back and do an average over the last 12 months, because since we had the ability, it was slightly more than that. It was just 3114. So factoring in the, if you were to take the full 50% and that $31.14 each month, then that would be $1,323.95 that he would be needing to pay, which is slightly more than I had in the data sheet there for y'all, but about the same. So, yeah.
My calculation is...
Okay.
So you have the, the 25, 23...
Yes.
35 divided by two.
Divided by two.
Yeah, you add 30 to it.
30, because it's two billing cycles, so it'd be 60.
I didn't locate this, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's how I did that. Maybe I'm wrong.
That's what I missed it.
Maybe I'm wrong.
And that's, that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from Joe Thompson on behalf of Gueno Vida Thompson regarding a utility bill adjustment for the property located at 4156 IH35.
Okay, got a motion on the floor? You got a second? Okay. Any further discussion? Joe, anything you want to say or anything you want to pass on?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, we're trying our best. I do want to go ahead and add on there. Counsel, if you did not, if you have not seen, there's photos in there where he did repair it. He took care of all the stuff that needed to be done, to be able to say, take care of the, the actual repair, which is one of the things that we always ask.
Correct.
Before it comes, that it was already taken care of and it was done, so we don't have to worry about it again. Is this a vacant, do you have a house out there?
Uh, whoa, 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 is there a way to review the bill again? Because the day, the way it went down.
Come on up, come on up, sir.
Thank you. Yes, because I wasn't working, well, actually, on Sundays, usually sometimes I have water leaks, and sometimes the water's just off. And then one day I didn't have water, so I didn't make a little bit of it. Till one day, and when work came back, that's when I noticed, I called the city, and they told me the water was good. Then they told me, I told, I looked around, around, see if I had water. I didn't have one. So they told me check the meter, and it was running. But I didn't find anchors, and everything was green, so I can't, I couldn't, actually, we found, we fixed it, but we never did find a water leak. So we had to make a new line, so.
You did that currently as I was on this property?
Yes, I do.
Oh, you do as I?
Yes, yes.
But you, you were there daily, and you just didn't notice it?
Yeah, because I had water, but until Sunday. I can't, I can't, I can't give you the, actually, the, I wish I had to take home me. But it happened on that, on the weekend, on the Sunday, and it just, I don't know what happened there.
How many days have we talked about that?
Yeah, I'd have to go back day-wise, but I know normally, you know, it's generally about a month each cycle, right? I mean, there may be a couple more, a couple less, you know, depending on when we pull the site, the bills. But those, those amounts that were provided in that, in the data sheet were from his actual bills in the system, and based on the consumption that was read. Is that a, do you know if that's a radio read?
That's a radio read.
That's a radio read meter out there, so the, so, I mean, it's pretty accurate.
So what, what did this man ask? Sorry.
Well, even, I, I'm happy with the deduction, but I'm, right now, I'm in a very tough position to pay the 1,200.
Well, we'll still have the payment plan option and all that.
Part of the, what the council understands about the citizens, and accidents can happen, and it's unfortunate. Prior to our decision to do this, they would've been held 100% responsible, and we have quite a few that were. But please, you can get with the city administrator and work out a plan.
The plan, you, you still have flexibility with that, okay? You can work out. And I wanna say thanks also to the VFW. I know they've been here, and they've been trying to help him as a veteran, too.
That's good.
So they can also be part of the plan, to be able to do that. All we're doing, the action that the council's doing right now, is for us just to be able to reduce it. So instead of coming up with a plan with this, now you only have a plan of this, okay? And I know you already paid into some of that, and all that will be taken into account, and then you can work these details with Zach, okay? If that makes sense?
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes, just say, introduce yourself first. Come on up.
So I'm Michael Gonzalez, I'm the commander of the VFW, and Joe's one of my guys that comes and helps, and helps us out there all the time, volunteers. My question is, and I guess it's been a couple, I don't know, problems, months ago, that he received the bill on the 20th of June. The 16th of June was when the meter was read. When he got his bill on the 20th, he shut his water off three days later. How does he accumulate another $1,200 with no water services for two weeks? That's where I'm confused. That's why I didn't know if, when Zach had called me and said, oh, it's another $1,200, I'm like, for four days? There's no way, that's two swimming pools, Olympic sized swimming pools in that. I'm just curious, is, it might've been read wrong to where, because he only made the minimum payment. Was it just a carryover for what he didn't pay the previous month? Or was it an additional $1,200 for four days? That's why I was confused, and I'm like, and I told him, don't be surprised when they tell you it's $2,500. And I didn't ask Zach, because I forgot all about it until after the fact.
I mean, it showed up as the, the additional, like, $1,200 or so, I mean, based on the, the consumption, but I'm, I mean, obviously, we're happy to look at it and check it out.
Like I said, four days of non-use water shouldn't equate it to $1,200. He could've ran it 24/7 for four days, and it wouldn't have equated to $24.
Everything is electronic, so definitely pull it up, take a look at it.
Possibly, we can double check just to make sure, because like I said, he's kinda, he lives there by himself. He's in an RV or mobile home, by himself, he's one bathroom, one toilet. There's no way.
And what will happen is, once again, what we're doing right now is, whatever that amount is, we're doing the 50%. So iron it out with Zach, we'll look at the numbers, verify everything, and then, basically, that's, that's how it's gonna be calculated.
Of course, and given I appreciate you guys listening to Joe here, taking a minute to consider.
Yeah, definitely.
Please go with the city administrator. Thank you.
So I got, anything else from the council for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, all ayes, we'll go ahead and take care of that, and appreciate that. I do want, before they leave, one of the fellow veterans, a gentleman with a hat. That's our famous individual that actually helped us out. We talked about it already, so we're just highlighting, so counsel, that's, that's AJ, who actually did this for us, and did the ones that are there. So, actually, let me do this. Let me go, let me go around, we'll take a quick photo, real quick. Hey, Pete, can you take a photo? Let's do this. Real quick. Did it this side?
Yeah, get your passport here, huh?
You got everybody? Hi, can I see you?
No.
There you go. Whoa, whoa. Is that good? Okay, thanks, Pete. You're good? Okay? Appreciate it. Thanks for doing this, and I highlighted, we got all three counties, too. So this works out really good, though.
Thank you.
It's awesome. Thanks, AJ. All right, let's go ahead and continue on, we're doing really good. Good discussions, good things to take care of. Let's go ahead and move on to D. And this is consideration and possible action concerning resolution number 2538, a resolution of City Council, City of Lidle, approving the terms and conditions of an agreement by and between the City of Lidle, Texas and TRC engineers for the task order regarding Juarez Street extension, plan review, providing for incorporation of preamble and authorizing the city administrator to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate such a submission and providing an effective date.
Mayor and counsel, this particular resolution is just the task order for the work associated, or the, or the review of plans associated with Juarez Street extension. This is the street extension that is gonna be completed by Rowan, out of our Coal Mine subdivision, out to 683 as a part of their development agreement with the city, so. And they are covering the cost of TRC's review for that, so, so this is covered under that.
It will be reimbursed.
Yes.
All right, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we do approve Resolution 25-38 as presented, with effective date of today, the 28th of July, 2025.
Okay, got a second. Oh, you, you, good, okay, I got a second. Any discussion? Okay, this is Juarez Street that goes into, into, from Coal Mine going out. 683. Okay, counsel, look, I guess, good goosebumps. You're making a vote, you're making a vote right now, that we are solving an issue that this community has had for 130 years plus. We're finally gonna be able to take care of our Coal Mine residents by providing them a secondary entrance and exit point for emergencies, for anything that is necessary to do that. So I just wanna say thank you for doing this. I wanna thank everybody, from Matt back there, to Zach, leading the effort, all of us, and being able to take care of this, that is very important for our Coal Mine residents. So with that in mind, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, counsel, I appreciate that. Awesome, awesome, awesome. This can be great. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to E. Consideration and possible action concerning resolution number 2539, a resolution for City Council, City of Lidle, Texas, amending the annual citizenship award criteria for the annual citizenship award, providing for incorporation of preamble and providing an effective date.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. So, a little bit of history, so, in the past council meeting, we've talked about trying to get individuals to come out and get on committees, help out. Any type of support we can get from them is greatly appreciated. So what I did was, I needed to include in the verbiage of our document that the citizens of the TEJ to be included. Austin, is, is that fine?
So this is, an award like this is just an entirely created, you know, thing by the city, so y'all can really do whatever you like with it. And I think the TEJ, I think if you were adding people from like other cities altogether, it might be kind of a strange award, right? But the TEJ certainly is within.
Well, this would be for being allowed to be a committee member.
Yeah, there's, there's no issue with it, cause it's, it's, this is.
Okay, I just wanted to. So you're just looking for us to.
Clarification, I just wanna make sure.
For TEJ can be a member.
Member of the committee.
Yes.
To come in and, and actually have a vote on who gets the.
So we're not changing the categories or anything? It's just the participation.
Right, so I submitted the original document with the highlights of the changes, and marked out the original text.
Just wanna make sure, so we put it on record, on here.
Yes.
That's good. All right, I have a motion on that? You have a motion? Anybody would like to make a motion for us?
Mike can make a motion.
But no, it's, he's bringing it forward. Let's go ahead and have somebody else make a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution Number 25-39 as presented with the changes that were presented, effective date today, 28th of July, 2025.
Okay, got a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, got a second, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All ayes, okay, motion carries forward. All right. Cool, cool, cool. Awesome, thanks, Mike, appreciate that. There's always little areas for improvement, and if we can help ourselves out with that, that's a great thing.
Thanks, Senator Council.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to F. Consideration and possible action concerning Resolution Number 2540, a resolution of City Council, City of Lidle, Texas, approving the terms and conditions of change order number one to the agreement by and between the City of Lidle, Texas and Ace Construction LLC for the TXCDVG contract number CDV23-0100, Water System Improvement Project, providing for incorporation of preamble and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate such an agreement and providing an effective date. Zach?
Mayor and counsel, so in wrapping up everything on the Highway 132 water line, a 12-inch water line project, that was a CDBG-funded project, there was some quantity changes in various sections that they originally had anticipated and do not need. And so the breakdown of all those were provided and reviewed by WTC, who is the engineer of record for this particular piece, or this particular project. And those quantity changes did basically equate to a $1,888.05 reduction in the construction costs. So, not a lot, but it is a reduction, and so something with change orders, we definitely wanna make sure y'all see it, and approve it, and move that down the road. So, that's all this item is.
Mayor, this is an easy motion to make. When the city gets money back, I move that we approve Resolution Number 25-40 as presented, with effective date of today, July 28, 2025, so we get some money back.
Okay.
Do I have a second, Anna?
You got a second? Okay, the only thing is, are we gonna ask Pete what kind of tools he wants? We're gonna get some money back, we'll put it back at Public Works. He's like, tools, what, tools? We'll buy some additional tools, that'll be good. Okay, with, with that in mind, any other, any, any comments? Nope, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, all ayes, that'd be great. And when, Zach, I noticed the board is still up there on 132. When do they take all the stuff down?
They're, you know, they're slowly just finalizing everything over there. I think they do have to wait till the Texas Department of Agriculture, who holds the, holds the funds, tells them that it's okay to take it down. We, we've had the 11th pay application that just came through, and so I think all that's left is just the retainage to pay, which comes out of the grant funds. So we've paid our portion already that we were required to pay. So I would say it's probably, I mean, within the next couple weeks, you know, to a month, tops.
Have they done all of these, taken over?
Yeah, so they, so they went, they went back with what was there before, right? Like, material, that's something that, and I'll get with Councilman Hughes, cause I know that's been a conversation that he's had a lot recently. I did ask them to go back, cause we have had a few complaints come up that maybe it wasn't fully in line. They did take pictures prior to starting, so, and I, I asked them to provide that to me so that I could help with those arguments if necessary. But, yeah, they're, for the most part.
So if it was gravel before, they put gravel back, if it was asphalt before, they put asphalt.
Awesome, okay. Appreciate that, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move on to E, and this is executive session. This is the city council, we're doing really good, council, actually. City Council, City of Lidle, may convene in executive session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551.071, Consultational Attorney, Section 551.072, Real Property, Section 551.074, Personal Matters, to discuss and consider the following items. A, possible purchase of properties within the City of Lidle. B, discussion and update regarding additional water rights purchased. C, discussion concerning pay classification update. D, discussion concerning bidding for booster station improvements. E, employment evaluation, assignment, and duties, discipline or dismissal of public official or employee finance director. And F, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public official or employee city administrator. So, Paola, if you can actually show us, it is 7:38 PM, and we are going into executive session. I know it's a lot of information, we're hoping to get through this real quick, and we'll see you in a little bit. If we could please turn all these off, I would appreciate that. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and step back. All right, Paola, it's 8:34, and go ahead, 34, no action actually taken in the back. We'll go ahead and move on, we'll go ahead and move on to number nine, and we'll go into discussion and possible action regarding matters discussed in executive session.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move that we give Zach, our city administrator, the authority to pursue the pay classification update as discussed in the executive session.
Okay, got a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, perfect, go ahead and.
All right, Mayor, I have another motion.
Okay.
For item D. I move that we give our city administrator, again, approval to pursue actions that were decided in the executive session concerning the bidding that was submitted for the booster station improvements.
Okay, got a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Got a second, thanks, Matt. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, got it?
Mayor, I'd like to make another motion.
Okay.
I move that we direct Zach to pursue recommendations for adjustments to personnel in the finance department to include necessary changes to job descriptions and pay for the personnel.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Got a second? Thank you. Any further discussions? I'm just writing my notes, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All ayes, okay. Thank you, counsel, appreciate it. Let's go ahead and actually, we're gonna go ahead and move on, if it's okay. So, Paola, if we can go ahead and take care of the department reports, you're up first. Come on up.
Hello, counsel. Mine are always quick. So, we have a collection for the month of June in Avon County for $19,000. The year-to-date will be $1,141. We have not collected anything on beer and wine license at all. I think we only collected a $2.35, that was in two months, I think it was. Nothing to this day, what we have collected.
And I would like to clarify on that, so, cause I know we've had a lot of conversations about that in the past. So the license itself, you're not really gonna go on the opposite of it.
Yeah, I am.
The license, you're really not gonna see probably much more than that for the year-to-date. It's the sale.
It's the sales are increasing, so it's not something that we need to add, so y'all see that, and that would be.
And I can add that one there.
I know the Finance Director used to communicate that, but without that, I mean, we haven't had that on there, so.
We add the sales. Do the sales.
I can add the sales on that.
Yeah, just so y'all can see, because it does look weird that, like, hey, we're not getting anything.
But it's not just that.
So.
Okay, I'll add that to the next one. These were just my news for the department, training and meetings that I had for the month of June, some Alamo chapters and meetings that I've had, and just meetings here in the departments, and Chester holidays that I've had for the whole month.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Home meeting, do we need to change that to manufacturer?
Yes, manufacturer home meetings.
Just be.
I'll change that.
Legal, yes.
Yes.
Put it to the law?
We'll do that. For our records request for the month of June, we have four requests. We still have one outstanding, and I fulfill three of them, still waiting on that one. The other two that I have standing for the last month were actually fulfilled, so I have nothing updated, and nothing that is outstanding for the last month, the month before. So a total to year will be 14, so I only have one that is still outstanding. And these were the agendas that were published, and others that was published in my minutes and ordinances that passed, nothing, but we did have at least three resolutions that were done for the month of June. And our next event will be our Lytle ISD complication, which is August the 7th. I'm scheduled to be there at 10:30 for that day, and that's about, well, I didn't even put the other one, but our next coming up will be our haircut, and that's our Tuesday. I'll leave that for you to talk about.
It's on the night?
The night, the.
Isn't it?
No. The hell was that?
I thought it was a fish.
Oh, the fish.
Tuesday.
Yeah, it's before the.
Yes, before. So yes, I didn't put that one there.
We have that.
And that's the end of my report, but I did want to go through with you all. I know that some of you have asked for the shirts for the polos and the other ones, the ones that are like the Magellan ones. Those are kind of hard to find, the sizes, and I know you've wanted some of those. I like to have like an email or something of what anybody wants, so I can kind of try to look for those. If I can find them, you want to go find them yourselves, we can reverse for that, which is the Magellan ones. Those are the car that wants to find them. And I know Mr. Emery had given me some sizes on his, the last time I talked to him, but for the most part, if you guys want to change your polos or add your polo to, I know we had that one in there, and that's through Mr. Chief Priest, just to give him the whole list. If anybody wants to change their shirt or add another shirt, and look for the other ones.
Yeah, well, we're doing, Paula, so we're going to do this kind of shirt and Magellan, that's pretty much it. Don't worry about the long sleeve shirt. So like, I actually need to get both of those shirts on there, and then some of those.
Yeah, it is one, one of those.
One of those, yes.
Okay, so if you can.
Email me so I can have all those sizes.
By Thursday, okay? I want to get the order done. Let's get it in the books. So if you can talk to Richie and get anything lined up, that's because I don't get in place the order by Friday.
By Friday.
So Thursday, if you can let her know if you need any of that.
Okay. And that's about it. Any questions?
Council, some questions?
All right.
Welcome back.
Well, thank you. Have fun.
It's good to have fun. All right, go through mine pretty quick. No real update, the 12-inch water main loop on here, really not an update from last time, but railroad street is pretty much all in except for two connections, one to our 18-inch line, that's going to be over by Prairie, and then the one back here on McDonald, they'll have to make a connection under the road there. And then the, there's the tree conflict that they've run into that should be completed in the next week or so. They've come to an agreement on what that needs to be and look like, so really, they only update on that. The elevated storage tank, we actually have footings out there already, so for the actual structure, however, we won't see the structure for quite some time, given what that, they erect pretty much, or they do it, fabricate it all off-site and then truck it in in pieces, basically. So it'll be a while before we see anything over there, but you can at least go out there and you can see the footings for now, and waiting for the hookups on that, so. Booster station, we, obviously, we talked about in executive a little bit, but we'll have that also coming up here for some decisions, so. That's pretty much it on that. On the residential developments, no update on Saddle Ridge. Again, they're still in that transition. I did talk with Kalara, who was the buyer of that particular subdivision, and kind of getting some ideas on, hey, where are we at on our street, you know, the secondary access. They are finalizing a contract with a home builder, and based on that, they're planning on having construction crews, you know, pretty quickly after they finalize that, so I'm hoping that we start to see some movement. The good thing is that we're not seeing owing any homes out there right now, because literally they have nothing going on with this whole transition going, so that's been our one saving grace with that, which was always our kind of stick, you know, with them anyways, you know, that we weren't going to see owe any more homes. So they're very much aware of that, and we'll continue to stay on them about getting that done, so. Saddle Ridge, on Rosewood, we now have 62 completed out in Rosewood, and another 31 as of when I pulled the report, 31 under construction, none that have been submitted, so we're in kind of a lull right now, but I think with those 31, they got their hands full, so that's probably why we haven't had any additional submitted for consideration. Lytle Farms, the only, I found this out today, so it wasn't a part of the report, but they are going to be making the connection tomorrow for the water line that was required in the TexDOT, or we asked them for additional, to replace with 12-inch in the TexDOT right-of-way, so they're going to be making that connection tomorrow. There should be nobody that's affected with that, so should be no issue as far as.
Down the road?
No, no, so I confirmed with Pete on that one, so it should be good. Let's see, applications received for June, pretty standard stuff there, and permits issued there as well. Let's see, inspections, pretty standard, what we're seeing across the board with the new homes. We had seven certificates of occupancy, all those being in Rosewood, and then we had two certificate of compliances with solar panels and the commercial sign, and I believe that sign was the Lytle State Bank, if I'm not mistaken, on their new sign that we approved the variance for, so.
Can we check for the signs? Because we've had one on the main screen.
Yeah.
That they have.
The dimming.
Yes, the sensor.
Yeah, I will double-check. I noticed that 702 in particular is really bright, so I'll make sure on that one.
We can make sure.
Yeah, for sure.
I know that's one of the things that the Council has mentioned.
Definitely, yep, I will double-check with them. Court, you see for the quarter total, since June was the end of the quarter, as well as what was in June, and I do want to highlight, I know that I let, I think it was at the budget meeting, but Ashley is now a Court Clerk One. She got her certification, so very happy about that. She's been working at that for a while, and so if you see her, please congratulate her. I know that was a lot of work on her end.
It's a very difficult test. As the prosecutor, have we not passed that?
Paola, you've been, I think that's, I think that's the first. I'm thinking of the previous, the girls that worked there, I don't think none of them had it, right?
Had, had, I was going to try to do it before she left, and she ended up leaving. She ended up doing it somewhere else, that I ended up going to be. She's the person.
So that's going back to the other person. So this is probably the first time in 30 years?
What?
In 30 years. So this is good. This is good for our community.
Yeah, and Brianna recently went to the court boot camp in this month, in July, and she's very much interested in at least trying to test as well initially, and just kind of see where she's at, you know, so, you know, we'll see what comes of that, but just wanted to kind of relay that, and as an effort for all of our employees, you know, really trying to push the training and certifications and things like that across the board, so.
Appreciate that, sir.
Yeah, of course. Total transactions for April, 187. Again, we want to show that, because it kind of looks weird in the chart. The chart is only showing what was taken in that month and disposed also in that same month, so, but total transactions, 187. Contracts, no, no, no update on these. You know, we're coming to the normal kind of auto renewals on some of these, so if there's anything that sticks out that you really need me to take a look at here soon, you know, please be relaying that, but generally, most of these are pretty standard ones that we have and continue to have. The only one that, you know, we're kind of looking at with what we've added into the new budget is that yard, city yard maintenance, and what we look at, you know, for what our parks capacity can bring compared to what Santero does for us, so we'll continue to kind of look at that, make sure we can massage that a little bit.
Make sure that Santero too.
Yes, yes. Just miscellaneous updates, the meetings on the left, on the right side. The master drainage plan, they're continuing to work on that, haven't had too much, you know, updates on that at this point. If you recall, the first phase, though, we'll probably see something right before the fiscal year, so here in maybe a month or so, we might get something from them. The interconnect, Mayor and I, along with Pete, have a meeting on Wednesday to get some final decisions on kind of location. There's a couple of options that, in working with the engineers for East Medina, and figuring out how best to proceed with all the utility stuff that's kind of in that corner over there by our booster station, so, and this is one thing that, you know, bringing on well two, you know, or, and/or bringing the interconnect solves the issue of our violation that we have open with only one well, so this is something that definitely is critical.
East Medina is basically the front seat. This is a big backup to the backup.
Yeah. The water waste, water rate study, I know we had some council discussions on that at our budget workshop, but we're kind of really wrapping up on that. I'm getting a final report here in the next couple of weeks from them, as far as their final points, and then obviously, I think I've scheduled it for August, the first one in August, so our next meeting, to actually have the public hearing for the rates, because we do have to basically publish that 30 days, at least 30 days prior to actually implementing that, so want to make sure that we're meeting those timelines as required under state law and our ordinances, so. The capital improvement plan, Cal Finley's still, you know, gathering data, we might even have some of that, you know, talk about at that Wednesday meeting with them, with the interconnect as well. The TexDOT sidewalk project, Ace Construction was selected for that particular project, so the same contractor that's been, is doing our water line, did the 132 water line, they've also, TexDOT selected them as the low bidder for the sidewalk project, and this is for running down McDonald and under, out towards the new subdivisions out there. So it helps our timeline of the 12-inch as well, massage that, and making sure that we're out of that area, so, and then.
Is there any drawings for the, under the 35?
Yeah, all the, well, the design drawings were all for, done by TRC. Oh, the warmer on the oven.
It just goes, so it only goes, it doesn't do?
It doesn't go under 35.
That's until they, so they.
Yeah, it's going to stop.
Continues on.
Correct, I'm sorry, yeah, it's going to stop at the corner, and then they'll jump on the other side by the Cape Professional Building, and then go down to the additional.
Turnaround and all that?
Yeah, that's when we'll get, yeah, yeah. And then the plugging of well three is completed, and obviously, y'all approved the final payment on that tonight, so great to have that done. As far as HR, so Finance Director, I know we've kind of talked about that tonight in executive, but we, you know, job continues to be posted on, and I had to repost it because it finished the timeline that they allow for that on there. Public Works, so I, and we did talk about it a little bit, started on July 14th, a gentleman that, he works for the City of Dilly, but he is contracting with us to help us on water and sewer. He has both of those licenses. I think this is kind of a test, and, you know, eventually, maybe we can, we can bring him full-time in, but at least for now, to help kind of with some of our issues and making sure that we have the proper licenses and people work in our system, so we got that in place. Co-compliance officer, so I did make an offer and hired Frank from our police department for that position, but he will start October 1st under that position, so he'll remain over in police department. It'll be completely separate, he will not be doing police work anymore, he'll just be code enforcement and compliance. We'll work with him to get the necessary license, which some of that's actually changed even this last legislative session, so that's, it actually benefits us to get that sooner and get that in place, so just wanted to relay that on those different positions.
Summarize the agreement to the Council in email?
Okay.
Because I know several things were talked about.
Yes.
I'd like to get a breakdown. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? All right, thanks, Zach. All right, let's go ahead and go into informational items, and we'll take a break after that, after we get done with the meeting for those. We got goodies back there, right?
Right.
Yeah, we got goodies, so make sure we do that. Anything?
I ain't do much.
Anything at all?
The only thing, just a reminder, next Thursday, not this Thursday, next Thursday, is the next budget meeting, so August 7th, just wanted to bring that.
Please.
I'll send a reminder.
Please do. Please do, so we can take care of that. How about back here? Anything, Austin?
And one, we'll call it a departmental report from the Attorney's Office. I did want to, we worked very hard over the last month to get a brief filed in the appellate case for the ongoing litigation for the fourth quarter appeals, and we filed that today, and actually, it was our deadline, so I had Joe Reiser, and we had a couple of paralegals and one of our associates, so the team did a great job. I think it is a good final product, and I just want to let you know that was filed today, so.
Okay.
I will keep you all updated, but that's, that was a big hurdle for us. It was a long, long enough, but it was good. I think it's a good knock.
Well, thanks, Austin, appreciate that, appreciate all the assistance. Do we have anything, Anna?
Nope.
Anything to share?
No, sir.
Anything at all?
Nope.
Okay. Got a few things I do want to, and I think Richard actually sent me something too that he wanted me to pass on, and I'll make sure, don't forget this on here. Let me cover his, and then I'll come to mine. I guess we have a fundraiser over for coal mine for the church, and let's see, on Sunday, August the 3rd, August the 3rd, so it's 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. They got music, mad hawk, DJ, you know, and of course, they got plate sales and everything. It's all with the fundraisers that they're doing with the facility, as they're trying to keep the old church going that goes along with that. Okay, first of all, I want to say thanks to David and the staff for the coverage during the time. Thank you for giving me a little bit, a little break, and be able to get away for two weeks. I hadn't done that for, what, AD, 10 years? So that was great. I mean, it was taking a vacation, it actually was, it felt like a vacation.
Was a vacation.
So appreciate that. Thanks to PD, Fire, Public Works with the handling of I-35 accident that we had Thursday night, very unfortunate on the freeway, but a great team came together, and we were able to take care of the folks. You know, from previous experiences, I can tell you that within an hour, we were able to clear everybody that was backlog. We came up with a plan, moved everybody out of the freeway, put them on the frontage road, we were able to control and kind of keep things moving, and at the same time, control the scene and do the appropriate respects, and wait for the JP to show up and everything else. It's just very, very unfortunate situation, but I just want to say thanks to everybody that showed up and just made it a lot easier that night for us to be able to deal with that situation. I want to say thanks to Public Works for taking care of our booster station. If you haven't noticed, the drilling on 2790, both our well number two and our booster station, they've actually put a little extra with painting the buildings, cleaning up, and doing a few things, so it's a lot, lot, a lot better. So it's a lot, lot, a lot better. It's looking really, really good. I wanna say thanks to Waste Management. You know, Zach and I, we've met with them here recently, and because of our numbers and all the adjustments with the number of customers and the number of carts, remember that they were moving, and who wanted one, who didn't want one, and everything else, we didn't even know, but they surprised us. So Lytle is now being served by two trucks. So if you notice, we haven't had any problems with trash pickup in the last probably month, month and a half? Something like that? A month? We haven't had anything. They actually decided to go ahead and start a second truck, and they're taking care of us. So what we officially know is we get three full loads, right?
Yeah.
Technically. But each truck has to, you know, drive one, go drop off, they come back, and they do a half a load. And the other truck does one full load, comes back and does, so technically, it's like three truckloads. So that's, that's good. They're tracking us, and that's good for our city, because now we're getting the attention that we need for that. Text dot project, this is, we talked about the one here, McDonald, but the one over by the high school is supposed to get done this week. Fingers crossed. School is right around the corner. There's still a lot of work to be done, but just so you know, in a sense, I think this is a third change, so hopefully, this one should be taken care of that.
Will they be doing a cleanup there, or are we gonna, the city gonna be doing that?
There's, they, they told us that they were gonna take care of it.
Okay.
That's what they told us.
Get nice and neat.
So.
Ready for a kill.
Yeah. Now, after that, just so everybody understands, after that is taken care of, every responsibility goes back to the property owners. At that point. It's just right now, it's a construction site, and the property owners will not be good to go in there. You don't know if they left material on the ground, it's buried, gets damaged by the vehicle, or, or your lawnmower, or you actually go in there and you damage the sidewalk, because you were cutting it and you chipped it, or you did something with it, and then you damaged their project, right? So right now, we're kinda in that, in that portion of it. I wanna say thanks to Project Track staff. We recently had an opportunity, they called the residence. It is another economic development project that is here, and that went very well. They did a good job with that. There'll be more to come, and we'll have a public hearing in the future with that. But just wanted to say thanks to them for doing that, for the residents nearby. Good event on Thursday night. Also, kudos to the Chamber and Texan Bank, they did a really good job. Good lead-in to kinda get a little, little energy going and everything else. Nice, nice place to be able to kinda get everybody together and start talking, and there were some great ideas. So I just wanna say thanks to the Lytle Chamber and Texan Bank for putting that together. Reminder, we're working on some of the committees, so please, please, make sure if you have any open areas, please take care of them, so we can go ahead and finalize those committees. We need to get it done. Matt is not here, but Matt Dear, our captain for the police, is helping us out. We're working on those ESFs with emergency management. They've been a big help with trying to get that, and we're taking care of the transportation portion that is in coordination with the school district. The school district is actually meeting tonight, if I'm not mistaken. I think tonight is a school board meeting, and they're supposed to be reviewing that. So this is an agreement in case of evacuation, that there would actually be supplemental to be able to help us out, be able to move people out, out of a designated area, so. Convocation already mentioned, on the 7th. Please make sure if you have a chance, you wanna be out there, welcome our, our school employees. They are our largest employer in the city, so it might be good if you get a chance on there. And so the 7th is a convocation, and then on the 11th is the start of school. So it's right around the corner, right around the corner, be able to do that, okay? Last thing I have is I don't see one of them here, but the other individual is here. So, I was gone. We actually had a birthday, and that was Michael. So we get the chance with a zebra cake. Actually, you can get two. I'll bring you the other one. You get two of them on there. We'll get the other ones, but if y'all can help me and celebrate, here we go, and one, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Cha, cha, cha. Happy birthday to you. Cha, cha, cha. Happy birthday, dear Michael. Cha, cha, cha. Happy birthday to you. Make a wish. All right, here we go. Additional funding.
There you go.
We have that. Okay, with that, with that in mind, please make sure if you haven't caught, and actually, I think Cassandra was out too, but if you get a chance, we just recently had Cassandra's birthday too, so wish her a happy birthday. If you get a chance to be able, she was, so we'll catch her, be able to do that. We'll tell her that, that, that Michael had her zebra cake, so we'll just pass it on, that goes along with that. All right, if there's nothing else on that, it is 9:02.
Mayor, can I make a motion that we adjourn for the evening?
9:02, thank you. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you for a great meeting. We do have some goodies in the back.